Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board of April 25th, 2017. My name is Mike Yeats, and I'm the chairman. To my left, Vice Chair, Mr. Davis. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Ray Dal, the head of inspectional services, Jay Duke is in the back, and our clerk, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or a pager, please put it on vibrate or silent, not to interrupt the meeting. If anyone speaks, please step outside. There's no microphones here. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, if you please stand up and take an oath, if you think you might testify tonight.
I swear I tell the truth, the whole truth, not the other truths, I'll help you die.
Are there motions to be read in a minute? People want it?
We cannot make a motion to read in a minute, people.
Second. On the motion, see it now, all in favor? Aye. Close, no more. For the board, case number 1608-6, C Street LLC, Robert Gallagher, manager for a variance finding to amend the decision previously issued by ZBH case number 4302, case number 0815, which required the lots to remain in common ownership on the premises number 1269 C Street. They just received a letter today, they wanna move this till June 27th. It's been moved twice already. This will be the last time it'll be moved, it will be hurried, June 27th, and if no one shows up, it will be dropped. Have a motion, please.
Case number 16 dash zero six, zero eight six, C Street LLC, Robert Gallagher, manager for a variance finding to amend the decision previously issued in ZBH case number 4302, and case number 08 dash zero one five, which required the lots to remain in common ownership on the premises number 1269 C Street, they vote to continue hearing until June 27th.
Second. On the motion, see it now, all in favor? Aye. Close, no more. I wanna move to Z1729, Grand Real Estate Investments, where variance finding to construct a single-family dwelling, attach the existing single-family dwelling, E10 Harrison Street. Counselor, you're at the floor.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming, two representatives of the applicant, to refresh the board a little bit, we were here in March about a month ago, this proposal is to add a second unit, residential unit, to the existing non-conforming, single-family residents. The proposal, as presented, meets all the incremental requirements of the ordinance, and we were seeking a finding from this board, but my client's proposing will not be substantially more than your platform is existing today. There were a few neighbors that had spoken that evening in March, to some concerned with, you know, existing, you know, current residents and others parking on the street, and we also, my clients had met and talked with a couple of the adjacent neighbors, you know, just kind of a block between properties as well. One of them is, that's the other Steve Day, Mrs. Muji, we spoke to her as recently as this evening, you know, so they are gonna install additional fencing on her side of the property, to, which she had kind of best, you know, what she would like to see. A little bit of, some bushes as well on that side. The biggest thing, listening to the neighbors that spoke that evening, is the concern with parking on the street. My clients went back to plans, really trying to promote the owners of these, these two proposed properties to park in the rear. You know, there's four parking spaces back there, so the initial plan did not have, you know, pathways or rear entrances to the properties, you know, so they went back to the board and did that. This proposed walkways from those parking areas to the rear decks and rear entrances into each dwelling unit.
And, on the outside, who are we putting on the outside?
I know the chairman had commented on the outside, to try to get away from the siding, and your suggestion was the cedar impression jiggle, and they certainly wanted to do that as well.
Thank you. The counselor asked me, he said some people came here. Counselor, why don't you grab the mic for a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your indulgence in this evening. Yes, so, for the record, Brad Crowe, 12th City Council, 65 G Street, and much to your observation in our conversation, there are some residents here from Harrison Street that just wanted to engage a little bit more, you know, with the board, obviously the plan has modified, how much, Counsel Fleming's sharing with the group, you know, obviously your call, but I'd love the opportunity, at least for folks who trudged out in this neighborhood.
And I just hope, Counsel, they have something good to add, okay?
Yeah, I'll keep on a timer.
Thank you. Anyone wanna speak on Harrison Street, please line up here. Anyone? We can move right along to one for the next. You're at the floor, sir.
Anthony J. Crystal, 60, down. But first of all, the plans never change. We got the plans the next day, there was a rear entrance, so they keep coming here, they're not really forthcoming, the plans never change. And by saying we want to request that people park in the back, they're gonna sell the building and then they're gone. They don't care if people park in the back, no one's gonna park. I did a little research, it's 2.3 per house, 2.38 cars, so that's, that's already over four cars. You yourself said there's gonna be no, people aren't gonna park, they're gonna park, there is no parking street. No one cares about the siding, no one cares about what the house looks like, it's just, it's not good for the neighborhood, everybody in the neighborhood doesn't want it, no one wants this, they said, they've talked to neighbors, they haven't, no one wants this. So it's really clear, you have a decision to make, you want what's best for the neighborhood, what's best for the community, or do you wanna just, developers are gonna make money, I mean, it just comes down to that. No one wants this, the parking's horrible, the parking's horrible on that street, this poor George is 80 years old, everybody's gonna be parking, no one's gonna be able to get out of their spaces, out of their driveways. It's pretty clear, it's either the residents that don't want it, or the developer. I mean, it's a clear decision, and you even said about the parking, so it, I can't see it being any clearer.
Good, thank you.
Hi, this is Anthony, you have a chair, it's 60 Harrison Street. I know that you and Joe must suggest literally, and we should hash the same thing, I guess it, I miss, you know, after the last meeting, I did email that, the next day, asked for a copy of the plans, which he did send me. We talked about, a little bit about fencing, but I didn't get the revised plans until tonight, it was the first time I talked to him, and I did see that they added a six-foot fence the whole way, I did just request from them that if this does go forward...
That vinyl would...
I believe, we said vinyl, which is what I would request, that if this does move forward, I did just request to them a little bit of a change to that, that it would be a vinyl fence.
Excuse me, can you guys please be quiet, if you're gonna talk stuff up, I'm trying to listen.
Then it would be vinyl fencing on that property line, up to my garage, and then tapered down to a smaller fence, because my driveway's very narrow, so a six-foot fence would be, to me, probably cumbersome between the two houses. But again, I think the strongest point is, is that, you know, we are in the neighborhood, the neighborhood is unhappy with it, I understand, they're just trying to do their job, but they are investors, and they won't be living there, so, you know, it's sort of us versus them, which you don't wanna make it personal, but it's not personal, it's just, that's what we are.
Next.
I'll just stand right here, if that's okay.
I find...
I'm concerned about the end of the street, my wife and I are both handicapped, and the way that the people aimlessly park on the sidewalk makes it difficult for us to get down without walking in the street, it's a one-way street. And I'm just concerned about it being so close to the corner that I'm not gonna have a sidewalk to walk on, and I find that to be very difficult for me to stay in Quincy much longer and just go somewhere where I can not have to worry about cars parked all over the street. And that's the one-way street in and out, that's all I got to say about it, sir, I appreciate if you can do anything to help us out.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. And, speaking of that too, it also creates an incredible blind spot, when they park on the street there, when you, and this is, this is an area that has a football field where Pup Warner plays, maul through the fall, kids riding their bikes up and down the street, skateboarding, road playing, if you park cars on that corner, it's gonna create an incredible blind spot when you pull into the street, coming from Curtis to Elec, you're not gonna see anybody. It's difficult now with the cars that are on the corner to try to pull out to Curtis Street, but when you try to pull down Harrison Street, you have four or five cars lined up there, kids riding their bikes are gonna be going right down the street, they're gonna go into oncoming traffic, 25, 35 miles per hour. Heavily, you know, area where kids all play, they're just finishing building the beautiful fields, you're gonna get more softball leagues playing there, baseball, basketball, pickleball, it's a very popular area. If you create the street that's, what, 15, 20 feet wide, make it eight feet wide, and have cars lined up, you're asking for a major problem with children.
You know, everyone's asking, it's like, there's no parking on this place, there was four spots for two units.
They won't park in the back, you'll have to go in the back.
Mammy, hand your hand.
Right, you park in the back, but then they're gonna have a thin driveway that's gonna prevent people from coming in and out, so if you're living there, you're like, I'm not gonna park in the back tonight, 'cause I know that Mary and Joe aren't getting up in the morning, I can't get by them, I'm definitely parking on the street, it's the easiest way to go. How else are they gonna get out in the morning, they can't be ringing?
I don't think they're buying when there's four spots in the back.
Because it's gonna be a thin driveway that will lead into that, you have two, two different halls.
And then you have four parking spaces in the back.
Right, you have eight people with vehicles.
Right, there's probably a lot more parking on that one than a lot of on Harrison Street, right?
No, well, if you have a single-family home, you could probably park three or four cars in your single driveway, one after another, knowing that if somebody's leaving, give them the keys.
Stat parking, right, with no one parks in stat parking lots, look around the city.
I know that, but...
They just, if you have parking, I wouldn't even think about it.
When you have separate houses, and different people living there, they're not gonna be able to coordinate who left their car, and the regular driver is blocking before the parked-in vans, and then after having that happen once or twice, you're gonna be like, I'm not gonna deal with that, I'm just parking on the street tonight, I don't know who's coming home tonight. I mean, that's the reality, what will happen, but it's a, it's a busier, it's the children, that's...
Name and address?
Dean Larkin, 28 Harrison Street. The Pup Warner and the, and the baseball and all the other games is really the big concern, 'cause that's the street they go down.
And I get that, I really do. Right. Is there anyone else? Pull up, pile up, hear him close. I think this is a good project, that really is, it's two, it's a single-family home, makes that place look nice, that's just my opinion on one person, there's four, off-street parking, it's gonna look nice, I think it's gonna upgrade that neighborhood personally, and people have to park in their parking spots, and if they don't, they should be called and towed, that's, that's what we should do in this evening, tow people, they just park everywhere. I was looking at a place today, and it said, it was 11 o'clock in the morning, and there's stat parking...
It's not illegal to park in front of the house, sir.
There's stat parking everywhere, it's just like bizarre, no, it's, it's two families, three families, four families, and people just park everywhere, one driveway, and, and we have to do something about that in this city, we have to, we have to have places for people to park, and if there's places for people to park off...
Build more units, as it could have.
You had your chance. It's my turn now.
It's not all of us, and so I can, it's not illegal to park, on the streets, and we can't, you're saying stuff that's particular...
Excuse me, sir, is there overnight parking in the city of Quincy?
What's that?
Without a sticker, there's no overnight parking in the city of Quincy.
There's overnight parking, we need to leave the apartment.
The apartment?
So they don't have to do something, good move it.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Clear the room, rob and act civil.
We are, we're just making points you don't wanna hear.
I'm one vote, I'm one vote, and that's my vote.
Mike, you have to give it, you're, 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 you're working different stuff, it's the same language.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're gonna stop this hearing until everyone counts it down.
More parking places.
Either that, or we clear the room, one of the two.
More parking places, not without...
One of the two. We all set? Thank you. So, looking at this whole project, what's on that street, two families, some residents, that's what may fall, I'm gonna be voting favor.
This cannot be voting favor. Likewise.
As dense as this neighborhood is, I think it's a good design, there aren't more adequate parking spaces, nothing holding, positive.
There's only four of us on this case tonight, because you weren't here for the stretch, okay. Have a motion, please.
This is Chairman, matter of Z17 dash 29, Grand Real Estate Investors LLC, where variance finding to construct a single-family dwelling, attach to existing single-family dwelling, let's follow two residences in the premises number 8 dash 10, Patterson Street, clean damage motion to break the variance in 20 years.
Second. On the motion, see it now, all in favor? Aye. Close, no more. Realize, there's an appeal period of 20 days, you have a right to an appeal, you can file an appeal, that is your right.
It was really good.
Thank you.
Go, 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 I'll be slow. All right.
I don't really get it on video though.
Veronica, run that, tonight's agenda. Gabriel Holmes, Gary Gabriel, for variance, construction of 2.5-story residential structure on the premises number 108 Garfield, representative here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dingding Woodman, for the record, Steve DeRosa, across the ballot survey, 95 points, we're here in the city of Quincy. We're here before we go to review this project with you, and it seemed to go pretty well at this board, wanted to see a parking plan in the long term. We have since presented that to the board, and we're not to make a seat, show any questions about it.
You get three, three places, okay, correct?
Three in the back and one in the front.
One in the back, four.
This is, Veronica, you had prepared for the...
We have four here on this floor.
You have the...
Yeah.
Four of the chairs, yeah.
Nothing, nothing to surprise.
It's a tough lot, you did well, I think.
Sorry?
It's a tough lot for work, but...
You've done a pretty good job.
Yeah, you really did. Do you have a question, David?
I don't even read as well. I didn't have any read.
Have a motion, please.
This is Mr. Chairman, with matter number 16 dash zero eight one, Gabriel Holmes, Gary Gabriel, where variance, to construct a new 2.5-story residential structure on the premises number 108 Garfield Street, I made a motion to break the variance.
Second. On the motion, see it now, all in favor? Aye. Close, no more.
Thank you very much, board.
Thank you. Good job in that.
Thank you.
Veronica, run tonight's agenda, Z1727, Dingding, I apologize, for variance to construct a two-story addition on the existing home on premise 17 Norman Road, we have the representative here.
Hi, I'm David, my name is Ryan La, and I represent the Home Office, this is John, and today is the, like in New York, the DVS here, and we, we were required to modify the roof line, make it lower, and change the roof pitch from the design from the 12 to...
Hold up, hold up, hold up. The council, thanks. Oh, my God.
We changed the, we changed the design of the roof pitch from the design from the 12 down to a 10 open file, we managed to lower down the overall building height to 30 feet, the overall height, and also we copied of the dorm at the back of the house and made it a two-story.
Oh, excuse me, you got a one-and-a-half story now?
Yeah, there's a 12 and a half story.
And you're gonna build a two-and-a-half story now, not a three, correct?
No, no, not, not three-story, I guess by definition, we are adding a one-and-a-half story on top of the existing one.
You're adding one story on?
We add one story, we were adding.
Which everyone has, that you have story.
Yeah, 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 no, no.
The third floor is gone, correct? The dorm in the back's gone.
The, the shed dorm at the back is gone, we still wanted to see if we could finish up, less than half of the added space for, for like a bedroom or a storage.
Whatever you have for room up there, you can do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and your roof line, I'm just, I just wanted that drop, it's just way too tall. I'm not a fan of the neighbors that live there.
I guess the, the allowable roof line is like 35 feet, we make it 30 feet, it's like still 50, we don't be allowed.
And what are all your neighbors' homes, sir?
I don't know, I mean, they are...
You know, you're there.
They are all kinds of...
They're all one and a half stories beside you, you have the biggest house on that street, and if it was three stories, it would've looked silly. I just think that's not fair for the neighborhood, even to come in with a plan like that, to think that you're gonna overpower everyone that lives there and take out all their sun. And that's what people buy their homes for, so they can sit in their backyard and have a little sun, until you move in and move three stories up, and they got no sun no more for us, they're alive, so they move out of Quincy. I'm happy if you did what I, that's what I wanted. Anyone else, any questions?
Nope, I got that request, I'm taking that out of your question. It says no, please. I'm not, huh?
For us again. Mr. Chin.
I'm walking out today.
I'll be in favor also, likewise, that's all.
Have a motion, please.
This is Chairman, matter of Z17 dash 27, Bing Guo Yao, for a variance to construct a two-story addition on the existing home on the premises number 17 Norman Road, I made a motion to break the variance.
Second. On the motion, see it now, all in favor? Aye. Close, no more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
...........................
On the motion, see it now, all in favor? Aye. Close, no more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Well, if you add an over a thousand square feet to a two-family home and you get stat parking for three cars, where are the people going to, if you're going to have big units to rent out, where are they going to park?
Well, the six, well, we're only increasing one bed currently.
Sounds good until you got a den, you got this, you got that. You got rooms that you've already turned from living rooms into bedrooms. Who's to say that won't happen again? So all I'm saying is, you got that extra additional space, you got two trees in the driveway you could rip out, you could knock down that garage that you can't park in because you can't get a car in because the tree's in front of you. And make two lanes of parking on that side.
And that's what we're proposing to do. There's currently one lane. And with, uh.
I didn't see that.
Didn't see.
Where's that?
Site management.
All right.
So, sir.
Look, you got a single drive.
I got a negative.
Right? Got one drive with a garage there. Nothing's changed on our plan. And it looks like it's like you got all the additional space and nowhere more to park.
Well, what we're proposing is for, uh, this is not the, we're closing up for time.
Right. So I'm just macking a couple ways to sort the plan that shows what you want to do, and we can discuss it again because I think that's just way too big. Just, I was here today during the day, and parking all over the place. Exactly. Come on. We never got, that's the proposed site, but it's the same thing as wrong. May ninth?
Okay. Do you have questions? Go ahead. Could you do me one favor? I'd like to see from the house to the right, if you're facing it, could you show me how far back you're going beyond the back of that house? Or if you're not going beyond it, you can tell me where they are lined up. You know, the one on the right-hand side, it might be twenty-four. Okay? Just so that I have a perspective of where.
How deep?
Where they are, how deep they're going. I mean, I know you got a lot of room back there, but I just, I'd like to see how far back you go there, if you could do that for me.
Would it Google Maps be sufficient to do that?
Uh, yeah, anything that just lets me, you put on, plot on where your, you know, where your backend is going to be committed upon the right, okay?
Any other questions since you're here? Again? No? Little landscape man along the side of the house, by the driveway meeting, try to fit something in there between the driveway and the neighbor's house, because you're going to move over pretty close. Be ready there. Could do that. Most of you remain in second. All in favor? Aye. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Trees in the garage, you don't want to use that garage. Trees on that. May ninth?
May ninth.
It's only going to be a couple minutes, maybe a dozen or you don't. One everyone's waiting for, I guess. I didn't realize, I thought someone would show up. I'm going to give them right now. Case number Z seventeen thirty-eight, Warren Place LLC for comprehensive permits to develop original style building containing forty rental units, including ten rent restricted units, and thirty-eight parking spaces on the performance number fifty-four, fifty-six Warren Ave, sixty, sixty-two Warren Ave. One eighteen, one twenty, a call in the air. You have to have a representative there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We only have four members tonight. Three members didn't show up tonight, and one has to recuse himself of vice chair because he does business with someone that you do business with here. He didn't want no conflict. So you have the option.
I understand.
Listen to four or wait until May ninth and then five.
Uh, we'll go for it. If you just give us a minute while we shut up.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll only take five minutes, then we'll come back while we set everything up and make all the noise they want. Then I ask you to rest, go and get a drink.
She's awesome. So it's pushing around, pushing, the best. Sitting up on her. I get a shot of Ryan, I did a shot of him. She's sitting up on her. I had to move my coffee to her. She's six months off the person. Crazy.
Did you try to fight down? They have a license.
And wait till they turn wedding clothes. I've been through it all. I've been through everything. Girls fifteen, seventeen.
Well, I don't think you know. So. So. It's the one part of the whole thing. Shouldn't it be, if it doesn't.
So the reason why we don't. Which is new to me, somebody selling drugs. Oh, yeah. It's like Google. I Google, I don't. I can't remember. Ever. And I Google, and I see. It's the same deal.
We're going to the very corner. We're going.
We're not buying these.
Yep.
So.
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 So. So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dan Bailey. I am an attorney with the Boston office of the law firm Pierce Atwood L.P. I'm here tonight for the Warren Place project, which is a forty-unit multi-family development on, at the corner of Warren Ave and Old Colony. With me tonight, and you'll be hearing mostly from these people because they're technical experts, I've got Sean Carpenter, who will talk about the financing for this project and, you know, the kind of the forty B elements of financing and qualifications. I've got Dave Consello, who's the project architect, Jack Gillen, who's our traffic engineer, and Mike Joyce, who is our civil engineer, and he's here to talk about stormwater because we understand that stormwater is an important issue. As I mentioned, the applicant is B and D property management. We are seeking a comprehensive permit under general laws, chapter forty B, for a forty unit multifamily project. There are thirty-six one-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units. The project is located at the corner of Old Colony Avenue and Warren Ave. The zoning in this location is about two-thirds industrial and one-third residential. The neighborhood is maybe best characterized as kind of a transition mixed-use neighborhood with a combination of residential, some self-storage. There's a roofing company across the street. I'll note that while our project is proposed for four floors, the industrial zoning does allow up to eight floors in the industrial zone. The board is familiar with this project. I don't know if all, I wasn't here, but I don't know if these four members were here, but it was, virtually the same project was approved by the board about a year and a half ago. We're now back, and that was approved under conventional chapter forty A zoning, we're now back with a chapter forty B project, and I'll get into why that is in a little bit. At that time, the project went through multiple hearings and it was redesigned to address certain neighbor concerns, including moving the exit from Old Colony, to Old Colony, the Old Colony side of the street to reduce traffic from Warren Ave. There was a relocated parking lot ramp, the early mid-century design fits better in the neighborhood. Lighting was improved around the building. A shadow study was done to address concerns about sun and light. Balconies were added, and all of these improvements, as well as some others, are included in this current design. The only real change we have is that there are now four three-bedroom units, and the building is about three thousand square feet larger. Dave Consello will get into a little bit more detail on the building changes. The reason there are three bedrooms is because this is a comprehensive permit project. It has to be approved by the state, and the state likes to see three-bedroom units because three-bedroom rooms can accommodate families. This is proposed as an affordable and workforce housing project. What does that mean? The project is forty units. Ten percent, you know, in accordance with state requirements, is affordable. So there'll be ten affordable units. This is not section eight housing. The rent will be one thousand four hundred and six, set by the state based on eighty percent of median income. So the rent for a one-bedroom unit would be one thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars, and for a three-bedroom unit would be a little over two thousand dollars. And that's for the ten affordable units. The remaining thirty units are being proposed under a relatively new program that the state has for what they call workforce housing. What's workforce housing? Again, Sean knows a lot more about it than I do, and he can explain it in more detail, but I'll summarize it. It's subsidized under a state program to encourage housing development for the middle class. It also requires rents to be fixed at no more than a certain amount. Again, in this case, it's one bedrooms are up to one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars, and three bedrooms are up to two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. The threshold in terms of the regulations is the idea is that these are affordable for people that make up to a hundred and twenty percent of median income, which for a family of four, under the state's rules, I know. Those rents are huge. It's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the process, and if I talk too much, just say just go, we got that. But as I mentioned, this time we've applied under chapter forty B, which is the state comprehensive permit process. That's intended to encourage the development of affordable housing. The first step in any comprehensive permit project is to get a project eligibility letter from an agency that will ultimately subsidize the financing for a project like this. In this case, the subsidizing agency is Mass Housing. We have a project eligibility letter that was included with the package. It establishes some important presumptions about the project, including that the project appears to be eligible for the housing subsidy program, that the site is generally appropriate for residential development, that the conceptual design is generally appropriate for the site, and that the project is financially feasible. This comprehensive permit application is the second step in the process. Procedurally, what this allows the applicant to do is to just come to the zoning board of appeals for a single permit. Planning board, you know, any other local reviewer, if you have an earth removal permit requirement, board of health, they're required to submit their comments to you, and you incorporate them into your decision. Another important element of the comprehensive permit project is that the zoning board of appeals has the authority to waive local zoning and other requirements. We have lists in our application of probably ten or twelve waivers that we've asked for. You know, the, you know, for instance, I think one of the ones we've got is floor area ratio.
Excuse me, what's that?
Floor area ratio.
Floor area ratio. Thank you.
Yeah. And finally, just wrap up with my comments with this, but it no doubt will come out, we have some discussion about ten percent affordable housing statutory minimum. The way that the statute works is if a community's housing stock has ten percent qualified as affordable housing on what's called the S H I subsidized housing index that put out by the state, then that community has a safe harbor against chapter forty B applications, and the board can reject it simply because the board determines that it's not consistent with local needs. But if you don't have ten percent, then the board is required to balance between local needs and a regional need for affordable housing. So you have authority to impose certain conditions, typical zoning-type conditions related to health, safety, site design, to mitigate the adverse impacts of the project, but only if those conditions do not render the project unethical. So I'm going to dispense with any more on the process and legal, and let's get to the real technical merits of the project. You know, Sean's going to talk a little bit about financing and affordability. He's got some charts that explain how those work, so I'd like to ask Sean to come on up now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Carpenter, Shamrock Development. I'm also a resident, one fifty-two Oxford Bridge Road. My specialty is in affordable housing developments. We're doing a number of developments around the country. We're doing a number of developments around the country, particularly two here in the city of Quincy, which we're very proud of. Uh, this project here is a, is an incredible opportunity for the city to balance the need for affordable housing, uh, and to, to benefit the neighborhood. Typically, the first question that anybody would ask me in any hearing or any board, and a number of these questions have come back, have come up as, through talking to staff, uh, in the city, is what does it mean to be affordable? In the comprehensive permit application process, it means that ten of the forty units would have to be at eighty percent of the area median income. You'll see on the chart here, we have, uh, the, the number up above represents the number of the people in the family, and the, uh, the number below that represents each, whether it's a fifty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI, or a hundred and twenty percent AMI. For instance, uh, the, uh, the two thousand seventeen area median income for Quincy, Boston, Cambridge, New Hampshire metropolitan statistical area is now, as of last week, one hundred and three thousand four hundred dollars for a family of four. So that means that an eighty percent, uh, somebody at eighty percent, one person, would be at fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. What does that mean? So that means that, uh, according to salary dot com and a number of other salary-based organizations that do these, these surveys, a firefighter, starting firefighter in the city of Quincy makes fifty thousand four oh three. As a single person, that firefighter would be eligible for these ten units. Um, what the applicant has also done has, has, through this process, originally when this zoning was approved, it was for four units, or ten percent. By increasing that to twenty percent, you get beneficial financing from Mass Housing. By going to twenty-five percent, you, you access a number of different opportunities through the state housing process. Mass Housing has a new workforce housing development fund. This fund is, is designed to keep rents low beyond the ten units that would be required for the forty B. So for the balance, the thirty units would be required to stay below a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI, but at any point would always be below ninety percent of the market rate. So we would have to do an annual market survey and determine that these, for the next forty years, these rents would always be at ninety percent of market. The benefit to the community is that we have a transit-oriented development seventeen hundred feet away from the Wallaston T Station that would now be rent-restricted to ninety percent of market to people that are making a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Or for instance, an accountant, mid-level accountant, making eighty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars a year, uh, according to salary dot com. Teachers in Quincy making between sixty-five thousand, you know, and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year are gonna qualify for this housing. So, the idea here is that we're not asking the city for any subsidy because we've, we've received commitments for that subsidy from the state. What we're asking the city for is for a comprehensive permit to, to allow this project to move forward for the benefit of the community. Uh, one of the things I want to say before I end is that I understand that there is some concern about parking. And under the comprehensive permit process, um, you know, parking is, is like any other requirement, which, you know, may or may not be litigated. What we've done through talking to some, some staff here and the planning and, and other city officials was to offer a couple of compromises for this project. One compromise would be to, to add another story, as you know that the zoning allows for this to go up eight stories. So because of thirty-eight parking spaces, what we would do is we would add another story and have a two-level parking deck. Uh, we would stay at forty units and have ample, more than one point five parking spaces per, uh, per unit, which would, which would satisfy a lot of the requirements. That project would be monstrous in the neighborhood. Uh, it would be not what the applicant has ever intended to do, which is keeping with the design characteristics of the neighborhood. So the alternative scenario is to drop this project down to thirty-two units, uh, keeping the thirty-eight parking spaces and, um, dropping essentially the fourth floor, making this a three-story, essentially a three-story with a caketop, two units would be in the penthouse. So we're offering that as a discussion point tonight as part of our process. Uh, essentially, what, what that could mean is that you could essentially approve this project with the condition that it be reduced to thirty-two units, or, um, you know, we could, uh, we could have that discussion. But, um, essentially, on the affordable housing component here, what this does is this is not what it could be in deep subsidy programs, which are very often talked about and which we've heard a number of cases. Uh, this is actually moderate-tier income restricted housing, uh, and that's what I think that this program was designed for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm David Consolo, I'm the architect for the project, and I'd like to go over the basic project and orientate you toward the building. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna put this board here. But, you see, I'm gonna work off the, this side because I'm a right. So, on the bottom...
I can't see what you're doing. Move the...
I'll move this.
Yeah, there you go.
Very good.
My employees doing some work, see what happens?
Exactly. We're paying for it. Just like what happens when the engineers draft the zoning by the lesson.